Formal session to order. We have a quorum here, and I think Jim Wood is here in the other room. And Mrs. Kane and Mrs. Wilson will not be here today for the meeting. So, Mr. City Manager, would you like to start?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have two information briefings today. And the first one, our Office of Cultural Affairs Director, Emily LeBeauz, is here. And I pulled her out of the bullpen with about a couple of days' notice, having got a chance to look at all the amazing, really wonderful things that are going on in her area, and asked her to elaborate on a whole bunch of stuff today. So, I hope you find it interesting. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome, Emily.
Hi, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. Good afternoon. Cultural Affairs is about partnerships with our citizens. Today, you're going to hear some exciting projects that are changing the face of our city and establishing Virginia Beach as the leader in the arts in Virginia. Using partnerships with the cultural landscape in Virginia Beach is about to change this weekend with the opening of the magnificent Zider's American Dream Theater, or commonly referred to as the Z. The organization has been producing some significant programming in its temporary space, filling a much-needed void in Virginia Beach. But I know their new spaces will generate a new, exciting connection between the audience and artists, and it's going to help establish Virginia Beach as a nationally-recognized center for creativity. We are honored today to have Mike Ziders and his wife, Charlotte. Mike has been the visionary and founder of the theater, and I know you share my gratitude to the Ziders for choosing Virginia Beach to build their beautiful new theater. So, I wanted to invite Mike up here to say a little bit about the festivities that are happening in this weekend.
Welcome, sir.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone else. I'm going to be very brief, but I just want to say thank you to y'all. It was probably about four years ago that this quest began in earnest, back when Jim Spoor was the city manager, and he introduced me, actually, to now Mayor Jones and then Mayor Will Sessom's. Things just really started moving, and the opportunity to open up a theater in Town Center was more than I had ever anticipated. And I have to say that what's going to open on Friday is, I think, more exciting than I had hoped for, and I had had pretty high expectations to start out with. So, I want to just, first off, thank you all for doing that. It wouldn't have happened without your support. The whole Block Nine area, the plaza, the bridge over to the parking garage at the Cosmopolitan, the streetscapes, the whole area is just beautiful, and we're just really, really blessed to have an opportunity to be part of that community. I just want to say, I mean, the Prettiest Festival, I guess, as Emily said, begins Friday. It's going to be a three-day festival. I never asked the staff to open up the festival. I'd always said we wanted to do a festival, but they said they wanted to open up with a three-day festival. So, we've got concerts Friday evening in the Studio Theater with the Hunts. We have a headliner act in the main stage on Saturday night with Kishy Bashi. But there's probably 25 other performing groups going on. We'll have artwork out in the plaza, outside our theater. The Love Sign will be over in the Fountain Plaza, I believe. We'll have educational programs going on over in the Westin. The Sandler Center has made classrooms available for us to do activities. We'll have some film going over at the Regal Cinema. So, we wanted to sort of convey to the community right out of the blocks that hopefully we're an active part of the community. And the programs are not just concerts, but there's going to be workshops, and there will also be creative teams in the area of theater, of film, as well as music. So, it should be a fun activity. We're hoping that we have a nice turnout from the community for that. I do want to just say that the mayor will have always a little footnote in the history of the American Dream Theater. I don't know whether he even remembers, but when we started the theater, it was called the Zider's Center for the Performing Arts. But the business plan that I had had a tagline underneath it that said, "It's the American Dream Theater." And we were having lunch over at Town Center City Club talking about this, and I was sitting next to him, and he leans over to me and says, "Mike, why don't you just call it the American Dream Theater?" And I said, "Well, that's a darn good idea. I think maybe we'll go with that." So, thank you very much. I appreciate the impact that you've had with this. Just as a matter of information, the memorandum of agreement that we have with the city includes 20 events that the city can do at no cost at the theater. At this point, I think we're scheduled to have the Small Business Women and Minority Owned Business Conference or Symposium will be there, but certainly that leaves 19 more opportunities open and available. And so, whether they're for, you know, public hearings, or whether they're for school concerts, or any other activity that may make sense, we're genuinely looking forward to having an opportunity to follow through on that agreement to have 20 events over at the theater. And I just would want to say that, you know, the partnership, I mean, the idea of trying to celebrate creativity, we're going to have great entertainment, and certainly, I hope that we bring that, and I think we will bring that through the two stages that we have. But it's also to be a venue that should encourage creativity within the community as a whole, and that's one of the things that the Prettiest Festival is starting out with. But if you walk, when you walk into the theater, you'll see that we have a display from the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame, the same statues that had been in the front of their museum when they had the museum. They're going to hold many of their events and their educational programs over to theater. We are working with ODU and other entrepreneurship programs within the Hampton Roads region to hold pitch sessions and educational sessions over at the theater. And so, this idea of creativity is more than just the arts. There's creativity in each of us, and I would like to think that the theater can become a sort of a little central crucible that can encourage folks to live their dream, regardless of what their dream may be. So, I think those are really the main thoughts I wanted to have. Just thank you so much for letting us be part of the city.
John has a question.
You probably remember when we met, but the council may not remember, but when we had commissioned the study that actually identified the need and location for the Sandler Center, that same study identified the need for three different theaters in our community, the Sandler Center and a large performing arts theater, which we've funded to hopefully go down to the dome site. But the other, the other third theater was a small, community-based theater. And so, I know that at the time when we were talking about it, we certainly didn't expect the private sector to step up as they have, but you certainly have, Mike, and I know that we're going to have some wonderful things there, and it's a great community asset, and I thank you for your work.
Well, I appreciate you doing that. We hope to be busy. We hope to have four or five things a week going on there. We have, I think we have performance activities every weekend for the next six months after we open. I think I sort of scared the staff the other day when we've been counting down seven days to the opening, and I said, "Well, you know, there's only 10 days till it's over, and we have to move on with all the other performing performances that we have." So, it's going to be fun, and I hope we get to see y'all out there many times. And I do understand a number of you are coming to the kickoff on Friday, and I look forward to seeing you there. So, thanks.
Ms. Henley has a comment.
John was just recalling some of the things, but I suppose it's been well less than 20 years since we even decided to have the Sandler relocate to the Town Center. I know that was very controversial, whether or not we were going to just replace the theater where the old pavilion was, or come to the Town Center. And now, it's just such a cultural center. I mean, whoever thought we would have been so cultured in less than 20 years? It's really, really amazing, but, you know, to have this partnership make that happen, it's wonderful over there, you know, just walking around over there. It's just hard to believe that it's really come together so quickly. But it's certainly been because of the, all of the work that so many people have done to bring all of it together. Really appreciate it.
There have been a lot of people that have made this happen.
Well, we're very grateful to you, Mike, for what you've done there. It's an accomplishment that we couldn't have envisioned a few years ago. And the fact that you've stepped in and stepped up to make this venue possible and be there on that block is fantastic, and we really do appreciate your interest in the city of Virginia Beach.
Well, thank you very much. I sometimes think that thank you goes far more the other way, because this is a dream that I had that you guys helped bring together. So, I appreciate the thoughts very much, very much so. Okay?
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate you coming in today. Welcome to stay.
So, I just wanted to briefly highlight how the work of Cultural Affairs is supporting your goals. Goal number one, growing the economy. We recently had a briefing by Kate Pittman with the Vibe, but there's been 25 new creative businesses throughout Virginia Beach created over the past three years and bringing 514 new jobs to Virginia Beach. The cultural industries businesses employ over 4,500 people, and that encompasses from anywhere from photographers to ad agencies, design publishing companies. So, it's a large industry that I don't think people really are aware of. The financially sustaining city, we just can look to Ziders and the partnerships that we have with our citizens through the Virginia Beach Public Art Foundation, that raises money for our public art projects, to the Vibe-Created District and the Virginia Beach Art Center that I'm going to get to later. We're revitalizing neighborhoods with the growth of the arts districts, and we're creating destinations like the Z for our residents and visitors, as well as creating an inclusive community that ensures that all of our community feel like they have events and programs that they want to go to. This highlights our top priorities. So, the arts, this arts plan, Virginia Beach 30, that I talk about every time I'm here, is now three years old, and I'm struck how many of the accomplishments have come true in the past three years, one of them being the developing facilities for emerging artists. That's a clear representation of what the Z is going to accomplish in the small cultural space at Town Center, as well as increasing our public art and placemaking initiatives and our multicultural priorities. The Arts and Humanities Commission recently announced a new grant program called the Community Arts Grant, and this grant is designed to support projects that broaden access to arts experiences with an emphasis on bringing the community together to celebrate the diversity of artistic heritage. This hopefully will increase the understanding and better acceptance among our communities. This focus on multicultural programming is also a priority at the Sandler Center in order to serve the broadest audiences possible. This season, we will bring a wide range of performers, including the high-energy Step Africa, which blends percussion dance styles practiced by historically African-American fraternities and sororities, African traditional dance and influences from a variety of other dance forms. The Sandler Center will also feature Sevian Glover, who is a tap dance master who is credited for revitalizing tap dance for younger, modern audiences. And to hit a lot of other spectrums, rock with Dotteri, he's a, that band is a Grammy Award-nominated chart-topper rock band. And Chris Bodie will grace the stage again for all those jazz lovers. The Cultural Affairs is partnering with members of the African-American community on two important projects, one being the Community Heroes posters. This summer, local artists led students from Enoch and Ebenezer Baptist Churches, the Men of Faith Organization, Cox High School National Art Honors Society, and Teens with a Purpose. They collaborated together to create posters, portraits of influential past and present Virginia Beach African-American community members. We, and I include myself in this because I learned a lot from this project, we learned about the lives and contributions of local figures, such as the Civil War hero Corporal Miles James, John Perry, the first African-American to serve on City Council, and the Olympiad Gabby Douglas Olympian. Working in pairs, the teens created lino cuts and made prints, and then wrote bios from their, on their chosen heroes. The lino cut prints will then be made into posters that will be displayed throughout Virginia Beach to celebrate the achievements of our local heroes and inspire our community. Each poster has a QR code that will link to the publicartvirginia beach.org website to give more information on each community hero, the student artist, and share more on the future African-American Cultural Center. The second project, the Community Voices Installation, an artist's team is creating a three-dimensional, interactive installation that celebrates the 12 historic African-American neighborhoods and ties the aspirations of those residents to components in the future African-American Cultural Center. Through the use of interviews, photographs, and graphics, they will develop an inspirational testament to the vitality and resiliency of the community. This installation will comprise of 12 portraits representing the 12 historic African-American neighborhoods, acting as both a work of art and a place of reflection, and will be installed on the future site of the African-American Cultural Center. 60 portraits will be captured in total, and in the oral history tradition, all of the portraits captured will be accompanied by recorded interviews and reside on a website and app specifically developed for this project. A few weeks ago, Kate Pittman came and shared the exciting economic growth of the Vibe. I'm excited and thrilled to share with you another project of a new creative business that's coming to the Vibe, and it demonstrates how the arts are a catalyst for revitalization and collaboration. With the ending of the Parks and Recreation Pottery and Ceramics Program, the artistic community saw an opportunity to continue these popular programs, as well as create a home for Virginia Beach visual artists. The new Virginia Beach Art Center, opening in the winter of 2019 in the Vibe, will include expanded space for the Artist Gallery, a new space for the pottery studio and classrooms, and an increased studio space for resident artists. The Virginia Beach Art Center will create a vibrant arts hub to anchor the Vibe-Creative It's been said that public art is a conversation with the public, revealing a place or a people's history, values, and stories. At the dedication of the canoe sculpture in July, we celebrated people and collaboration, the people who dug a trench across the Lynn Haven River centuries ago that inspired the artist Donald Lipsky to create this beautiful sculpture. We celebrated the collaboration of people that dedicated their time and money to make the canoes a reality, and the people of the beautiful Bayfront communities. The event was a resounding success, with over 250 members of the community taking part in the celebration, with standing room only, and just lots of enthusiasm in the room. The symbol of the canoe speaks to Virginia Beach, the Lynn Haven Inlet's history, but also to who Virginia Beach is today, the love of recreation and water, and it's been embraced by the community. Part of the success of this project and other public art projects is due to the collaborative spirit throughout the city departments. The staff of Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Planning have been so helpful and enthusiastic on this project. And Chris is here, and Cal, and it's been a, it's been a great team. Chris was saying to me earlier that he was at the bridge last night, and there was a bunch of people taking selfies with the sculpture. So, like King Neptune, we've created another landmark in Virginia Beach. So, now, a signature where we've, the Public Art Foundation has raised the money for the canoes, and now we've started to engage the foundation in a conversation about a new high-profile gateway coming to the city. As a main artery into Virginia Beach, the new flyover connecting Greenwich Road and Cleveland Street on I-264 East will see much of the city's activity, carrying an average of 250,000 cars a day. A signature public art piece would enhance the flyover and pedestrian green space, making this a site, a new landmark and exciting gateway to Virginia Beach. We also see this as a wonderful way of engaging the public and aspects of the project's development. So, more to come. We will definitely have a conversation with council as that grows more into development. The public art projects reach across the communities. We're trying to really make an impact in neighborhoods and not just in the Town Center or the oceanfront, really to get into neighborhoods throughout the city. Recent projects, the public art has the ability to transform the spaces we use daily and take utilitarian spaces and breathe life into them. The Seashore Cathedral at Rudy Walkway, the top right, was designed by Pepe Gaca, and he transferred the space along the walk and bike path into a city landmark. His mural used a geometric style using the impression of stained glass, and each column features detailed vignettes that represent different aspects of the area that make Virginia Beach unique. On the back wall, he pays homage to Paul De Pasquale's iconic sculpture, King Neptune. Virginia Beach is rich in natural resources. Our environmentally responsive public art projects are designed to inform and highlight Virginia Beach's beauty and natural spaces. Accomplished artists in this field are invited to participate in residencies to create pieces onsite using natural materials. Resident artist Benjamin Heller completed terrapin basin on site of the Pleasure House Point throughout the summer. That's on the top left. He, it is designed to highlight the type of nests Diamondback terrapins dig to lay their eggs, while bringing attention to how human presence can threaten their habitat. Families had an opportunity to jump in and have a hands-on learning experience with Heller as he explained his process in free demonstrations. Our community-based initiatives celebrate Virginia Beach spirit and diversity. These projects allow artists to immerse themselves within our communities, resulting in collaborative public art projects that reach neighborhoods across the city. It's public art created for the community, by the community, and with community artists. Last spring, artists from the area were challenged to transform Mount Trashmore steps into a fun and lively work of public art. Submissions came in, and the public voted on their favorite design. We had over 7,000 votes cast in one week, and helping hands by local artist Amy Bruce, the bottom right, received over 50% of the votes, with overwhelming positive feedback and public support. So, coming in FY '19, World Below the Brine is the newest interactive piece created by Tom Witt of WPA in Norfolk. We'll invite guests to sit and play under a swaying canopy of diffused light. It will transform the Rudy Loop asphalt lot into a new and exciting public space that brings the community together for a unique experience. During the day, visitors are invited to sit and walk below the piece and be covered in moving, diffused light and shadow. At night, it will be illuminated by LED lighting that will respond to the movements of visitors, creating a sensation of being just below the water's surface. We're also working with Parks and Recreation to highlight special places, from Lake Lawson to Stumpy Lake, to make people look at sights differently and ignite their appreciation for the city's national natural spaces. We have a partnership with the Virginia Beach Public Schools to engage artists and students in the creation of collaborative art projects that reflect the spirit of the school and its surrounding communities. STEAM education experiences allow students to get behind the scenes into how the public art is created. This includes classroom artist talks and site visits, and it's an incredible way for the students to learn how public art impacts their community and tells their stories and to imagine their futures as artists, innovators, or engineers. So, thank you for your time. I briefly just wanted to mention and introduce my team, Hazel Turner and Kami Hines and Nina Goodell. So, we are a small but mighty team that, so, thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Okay, Mayor, members of council, our second briefing for today is the Lesnar Bridge in Review. Thanks, everybody, for being here today. Appreciate it. Today, we have Chris Witowicz, who's our project engineer on this project, and I'm going to have his director as soon as Mark comes through the door. There's Mark. I'm going to have Mark do an introduction of Chris, and, you know, I think one of the most important things that Chris did on this job is to manage the communications with the neighborhood and partner with the Bayfront Advisory Committee and Commission. And Cal Casir is here today in the corner, and thank you, Cal, for your support to Chris and the whole project delivery team. I know it was trying, but I think Chris's communication and the extra effort he took to keep everybody informed on the progress of the project was instrumental in keeping the phone calls of panic down to a low roar, if at all. It was probably one of the more successful projects that we've done, especially with the duration that it took. So, Mark?
Okay. Mayor, members of council, we just want to give you an informational brief on Lesnar Bridge. But first, I want to tell you, the city owns and maintains 55 bridges throughout the city. In 19, in 2013, we had three main bridges that needed to be replaced. One of them was Laskin Road Bridge, which VDOT is going to do with the Laskin Road Project. The second one was Sandbridge Road Bridge, which we're getting ready to advertise for construction on that. And the third, and the biggest one, was Lesnar Bridge. So, we have made and continue to make excellent progress in maintaining our bridges throughout the city. The last significant bridge project that I was involved with was the Punggoh Ferry Bridge in 1991. I know when you look at that bridge, you still think it's young. It's 27 years old. We are going to be doing about $3 million worth of maintenance work next year sometime. So, it looks young. It looks like a great bridge, and the only one I know that tops it right now is Lesnar Bridge. If you drive across Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel from the eastern shore, and you look at the horizon of Virginia Beach, the first thing you see is Town Center. The second thing you see is Lesnar Bridge, and they both define the city of Virginia Beach. The bridge itself, to me, is a work of engineering art. The lines are so smooth and simple, yet you know the complexity of the bridge itself while you watch it go to construction. Chris Witowicz, he's a senior project manager. He has lived that bridge all the way through design, through construction. If you've ever heard him talk about the bridge and explain the various elements that took place to construct that bridge, you would appreciate the engineering art that was devoted to that bridge. So, with that, I'll let Chris come up, and he will give you the presentation and walk you through how we took down an old bridge and we put up and established a iconic bridge in the city of Virginia Beach. Chris?
Like Mark said, we consider this a piece of structural art. This project has fought us since 2006 to finally get to the stage where we've got traffic on both bridges. There's been a lot of challenges with this project, but I could say with confidence that at the end of the day, we are delivering a very good bridge for the city of Virginia that at the end of the day, we are delivering a very good bridge for the city of Virginia Beach. We have worked with VDOT, Federal Highways. There's $22 million in city money on this project. We've got $93 million in state and federal money on this project. We learned from the lessons learned of both Federal Highways and VDOT on the design and construction of these types of bridges so we could have a low-maintenance bridge and not have to worry about $3 million worth of maintenance, you know, 26 years from now. The design life of this bridge is 100 years. With the construction of this bridge, we fixed a lot of ills with the old bridge, but we've also made a lot of improvements for connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists through the community. We made it a destination for folks to want to go to. So what I wanted to do is first highlight some of the things that were on the old bridge that a lot of people forget. We only had one four-foot-wide sidewalk on the westbound bridge. This is all we had. We had no shoulder. We had 11-foot lanes on the eastbound bridge. There wasn't even a sidewalk leading up to the bridge. We actually only had a footpath. So anybody who wanted to walk or cycle... Thanks, Mark. ...across that bridge really had to negotiate a pretty narrow corridor to get across that bridge. Oh, now what'd I do? There we go. So as I mentioned, there was no connecting sidewalk to either bridge approach, no shoulders, and both travel lanes were 11 feet wide. So we had a pretty narrow corridor to get both pedestrians and traffic across that We had a narrow navigation channel. The old navigation channel was over here, was only 90 feet wide. The distance between the piers, the pier columns here, were about 50 feet. We also had all of our utilities on the outside of the bridge. Public utilities had to do a lot of maintenance on their water line there with hanger systems, corrosion, coating of that line. So we wanted... The other thing we did with this project, we put all the utilities inside the new Like I mentioned, there was no sidewalk on the eastbound bridge. This is what it looked like when you were going up to the eastbound bridge. Coming off that bridge, and Cal, you remember, in the community, cyclists come off this bridge and they hit the sand to go down here, and they could almost end up in the lane of traffic. For the new bridge, we have 10-foot-wide multi-use path. We actually have an eight-foot-wide outside shoulder. We have a six-foot-wide inside shoulder, a 14-foot-wide outside lane, and a 12-foot-wide inside lane. So we can accommodate pedestrians, cyclists, both the recreational and on-road cyclists, and of course, the vehicular traffic. And I could tell you, you've heard the saying, "If you build it, they will come." Since we opened up that eastbound bridge to both motorists and cyclists and pedestrians, I have never seen so many people using that bridge. Even from before, when we were doing the engineering, we were trying to get an idea of PED count, people who were going to walk and ride bikes across that bridge. There wasn't a lot of people. But now that we've made it feel safe for them to cross that bridge, they're coming out of the woodwork. And it makes us very proud that we could deliver something to the citizens of Virginia Beach that they're going to use and appreciate. So here's what we have now. We have a 10-foot-wide sidewalk going up to the bridge instead of a four-foot-wide. We have handicap ramps at the intersections. That was another thing. We didn't have handicap ramps at these intersections. So now we have ADA-accessible ramps. Here's our utilities inside the bridge, our water lines, electric lines, communication is all inside the bridge now. There's no exterior utility hanger systems. We eliminated all those exterior hanger systems because, like Mark said earlier, there's maintenance involved with these bridges. And that's one thing, if we could put inside the bridge, we could lower the cost of future Here we show the completed deck of eastbound bridge. This is the 12-foot lane, six-foot shoulder, 14-foot-wide lane, eight-foot shoulder, and a 10-foot-wide multi-use path. One comment I've heard from the community was, "Why didn't we extend this shoulder all the way through to the intersections for bike accommodations?" But we do have a bike accommodation. That outside lane is 14 feet wide. It does make accommodations for cyclists from intersection to intersection. It's just that we have extra room on the bridge for a shoulder. We increased the navigation channel from a 90-foot channel to 150 feet. We actually have a vertical clearance of about 10 feet higher than the old bridge. We have a new scenic overlook. Like Emily mentioned earlier, we have a piece of art out there that people come and visit every single day that I'm out there. We've added some street furniture and decorative planters. Some of the aesthetic features of this bridge, we have a bridge coating, which is a palamino beige, and it matches the sand that's out there. You can see some of the sand out there. We have what we call, it's a retaining wall, but we have a decorative pattern in that retaining wall to look like the sand on the beach. And we've also had this decorative rail going across the bridge, and pretty soon, probably within the next 30 to 45 days, you're going to see the bridge lit up at night using this necklace lighting across the bridge and the column lighting up underneath the bridge. Now, that necklace lighting and that column lighting, you can change the colors. So we have an ability to change the colors on that lighting. And Dave, I don't know what color it's going to be when we finally finish that, but I do know that the app is going to be available on a phone. So at some point, we're going to have to talk about who has control of the colors of those One thing I wanted to mention is, a lot of people have asked, "What happened with the old bridge? Did it go to a landfill? Did it go to a dump site? Where did it go?" Actually, it went to a new artificial reef. So here, you can see some pieces of the old bridge being loaded up on barges, and that was all shipped out to Cabbage Patch Reef, which is off of Kipte Peak State Park. So if we have any fishermen or women in the room, you could look up on VMRC's website and get the coordinates for that spot, and there's 30,000 tons of concrete out at that reef.
Nice founder, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah. This is a picture we shot before we started construction. Here, you can see the two old bridges. Here, you see just the four-foot-wide sidewalk on the westbound bridge, and of course, there's no sidewalk here. Narrow lanes. You don't have any separation between the pedestrians and cyclists on the sidewalk from the traffic. You have a narrow channel. And this is a, it's a rendering, but it's accurate, of the new bridge. So here, you see the 10-foot-wide path. We have our shoulders, our 14-foot-wide outside lane, 12-foot lane, and six-foot shoulder there. This was taken out of the project. We worked with Emily. This is the seating area. We worked with Emily to take that out of the project and put foundations instead to support the artwork that they were building out there. That's where that collaboration came in. We had to make sure when we were building this bridge that we had all the foundation work done by the time they're ready for the artwork. So we worked real close with their engineer, their artist, to make sure we had the right-sized foundations put in that location. We expect the total project completion by December 2018. And we do have a ribbon cutting anticipated for mid-November. Councilman Earn, you can see yourself over there from another ribbon cutting. We expect to have that held maybe underneath the two bridges when we complete the new boardwalk. There is a new boardwalk underneath those bridges. It's going to be lit with LED lights also. And of course, the underside of our bridge will be lit with the column lighting. We don't have any of the details yet, but we do know we want to plan for mid-November. We'll have our partners in VDOT, Federal Highways, be invited. Of course, you all invited to that ribbon cutting. All right. Any questions?
I think Mr. Wood has a question or a comment.
Yeah, well, one thing I would just commend to the council is Chris's community outreach, and I think Cal can certainly attest to that. Throughout this entire bridge process, it seems like it's been like your entire life, I'm sure, at this point. I would get these emails sporadically, and it was entitled, "Wojo's World," and it was what's going on with the bridge this week and what's going on. And I have to tell you, it was, Chris has always been extremely accessible to the community about all this stuff. I didn't know about the app, and I would say it's divided between the Bayside and Lynnhaven District, so I'm just saying, maybe there'd be two apps. But I would tell you, I would just say that Chris has done a phenomenal job on this, and the community outreach on this has just been outstanding. I did have a comment from somebody in the biking community asking about the on-road capacity. So which of those lanes is designated, is it striped or marked, or will it be striped or marked?
It won't be striped or marked, but the outside lane is a 14-foot-wide lane.
So we're saying the 14-foot outside lane on both sides?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, both the eastbound bridge and the westbound bridge. It has that bike accommodation.
And why would it not be striped, out of curiosity?
Well, I think to have a bike lane, we'd have to have a four-foot designated area. We just don't have the pavement without there.
So it would be an additional four feet?
It would be an additional two feet, because we have 14 feet of pavement for that outside lane. If you're approaching the bridge, you have a 12-foot and a 14-foot lane.
Right.
But that's the most room that we have. To get that extra two feet on each side, you'd have to move that curb line back another two feet.
So it's 14-foot outside lane for bike?
Yes, and that is an acceptable cycling accommodation for VDOT.
All right, thank you.
All right.
John?
Well, I think Barbara was next.
Well, I was, John's already, what's his name there? Jim. It starts with a J, has already talked about the bikes. And as the liaison for the Bikes and Trails Committee, I know that they have had a lot of discussion about the whole shore drive issue as far as biking, and it's really getting better, and this will make a big improvement. I did have a phone message this morning, and I didn't get to follow up with him, but he said that the camera that is there has allowed the boaters to keep an eye on that parking lot to see when there was available parking, and it's really been a big help. And is that camera going to stay, possibly?
It wasn't going to stay. That camera, we pay about $450 a month to maintain. It takes a picture every 30 minutes, so that was going to be removed at the end of the project.
Well, you might want to talk with the fishing community or the boating community and see if it's worth that or not, but I did have that input that I wanted to pass on.
I want to get a different camera and just continue to see.
Well, I think this is a good opportunity to talk about the need for this body to continue to be progressive. I remember back when we had first talked about the engineering for this, and we, I think it was like a $5 million price, it might even have been more than that, to actually do the design for it. And at the time, we did not know how we were going to pay for it, and those engineering stamps had a lifeline of, or lifetime of like five years or something, so... But had we not have done that, then we would not have been eligible for the stimulus money, and we would be, you know, trying to figure out how to pay for all of this locally. So, I mean, I think that this body deserves a lot of credit for having that political courage to go in and spend some money and be ready for stuff when it came our way. But I remember being a little nervous when we approved it. I'm sure I'm glad we did.
This was one of those shovel-ready projects.
That's right.
And VDOT champions that. The city of Virginia Beach provided, paid for the engineering, did the utility relocation, did the acquisition, and truly had a shovel-ready project that the governor wanted to see some state funds go to and start getting some of these projects to construction. So that was definitely a tribute to you all to make sure that we had that project available.
Yes, Joe.
Well, I think, going back to what John says, also, we owe certainly a debt of gratitude to Governor McDonnell, who pushed forward a large amount of money for this. But also, you remember when that bridge collapsed, I think in Minnesota or something like that? I remember the sobering comments that you all made when you came here, talking about the fact that in a lot of ways, this bridge was rated worse than that bridge that had collapsed there. And it was only a matter of time before we had some significant structural issues, so I think it's, I'm really happy.
This bridge came in the nick of time. You know, this corridor is part of the strategic highway network. So we were at the point last year, before we opened up the bridge, the new bridge to traffic, that in the bridge inspections of the old bridge, it was going to have to be posted as weight-restricted. So you could imagine the problems that that would have caused for our military to have a weight-restricted bridge on a strategic highway network. Thank God, we went under construction when we did, because it was just by the skin of the teeth that we're able to shift traffic off those old bridges and get them onto the new bridges.
You may not realize it, but you probably do, and that is that you've created a lover's peak out there. Every time I drive over there at night, somebody, some couples out there hugging, a few kisses going on and so forth. From that standpoint, we've created another amenity.
Well, they do that sometimes because they know that that camera's out there.
Right, yeah.
They know the camera's there, and they figured out that it takes photos every half hour, so they try to time their get-togethers. So we have noticed that.
$450 if we charge for each photo.
Well, that's part of the engineering, I guess. I don't want to belabor it, Mr. Mayor, but I was with the CEO of Little Creek, and he was talking about how grateful he was because this really is, to Chris's point, you know, a readiness issue for them, so good stuff.
Thank you for an outstanding job, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
It's something we can be proud of.
What's the next job for you? We've got emails we'll miss.
Well, it's just everyone's old moments.
All right. The next item is City Council Liaison Reports. Yes, John?
Shannon and I met with the Virginia Development Corporation last week, and they have an audit out. I've asked for a copy of it. I think Patty might have it, but I'd like to get a copy of that. It does show that this year and last year, they ran in the red. They sold some assets to help out their organization, but they do have a $5 million note that's due in 2022. So Shannon and I, we're going to meet and learn some more about that, because I do think there's some underlying issues there. I'm sure that's not going to surprise anybody at the table, so I think they're going to need some kind of help and some strategy, but I got to get some more information. We just got the, we were at the meeting and heard the audit. We didn't actually have it before we got there, so we were just hearing it on the fly. Obviously, the new members were all there. They'd all been to orientation, so that's good to know, so they can now have a meet and quorum and conduct business. But they do have some challenges, I do believe, to get with, one of which I mentioned before was the delinquency rate on their collecting their rent. That's certainly something they're going to have to improve on as part of their cash flow management. But they're all dedicated to the job. They know what they've got to get done, but just to give you a heads up, there are some challenges there.
All right, yes, Barbara?
The Hampton Roads Plan and District Commission recently established a subcommittee, the Coastal Resilience Subcommittee, and I'm serving as Virginia Beach's representative on that committee, and I think it's going to be a very interesting subcommittee, and I hope it's going to come out with a lot of good things. We had the second meeting last week, and a couple of things that were on the agenda. It was a very good discussion that we had for a couple of hours there, but two items that I know I've heard, or I think are really especially important to Virginia Beach, that just showed up on the agenda and I thought were very good choices to have here. One of them has to do with this notion that the NOAA standards need to be updated for our region, the Atlas 14 region, because those standards being rather old just don't meet the conditions of today's circumstance as far as what weather is. And I think that Tom has often mentioned the fact that, you know, we would like to see those updated, but of course, we're in this region that gets updated when NOAA says it's their turn and it's not our turn yet. But there was a good discussion about that, and we did have representatives there from, or at least this last meeting, we did have a representative from Senator Kane's office, and I think maybe we will have some look at that, whether it will lead to anything. We can only hope. But another thing that I was pleasantly surprised to see listed as something that might be an idea for this committee to pursue is that, you know, the smart scale program in rating the roads that we have to go through to get state funding, of course, doesn't include anything for resiliency, and this is going to be a factor certainly within this region. And the suggestion that we might want to pursue possibly maybe getting some bonus points for projects that address coastal resiliency. And that really caused me to think of a project that we have got now, the NMO 78 project, which is going to be one of those shovel-ready projects by next summer. It's going to be, you know, we have done all the local work, the design, the acquisition, the permitting, the everything that has to be done, and by next summer, it will be shovel-ready. But if we have to wait until we get all local money, I mean, it's programmed in the CIP, but it's the eight years. It'll be sitting on a shelf for about three years, because that's a program, or that's a road that just doesn't get... a road that just doesn't get any points in smart scale, because the smart scale emphasizes congestion and economic development and congestion, you know, doesn't meet these rural roads, and it's not only Sandbridge, but I'm thinking of these other roads that are going to be, at some point in the future, we're going to have to be looking at down there, because one thing that really scares me about these flooding situations we've had over the past couple of years is that all of the access roads out of the Old Punggol Borough were flooded, and not until you could get all the way up from Knott's Island to Seaboard Road was there a road that, you know, would take you out of that area, because Punga Ferry Road was closed, West Neck Road was closed, Indian River Road was closed. And I know we're looking at the possibility of maybe elevating some of those roads or something, but none of those would reach the smart scale level to be able to get state funding. So I really think pursuing this idea of maybe some bonus points for resiliency projects and the other cities that were represented there were very much interested in this concept too, because it's going to, it's going to affect all of us. So I hope that's something that maybe we might be able to, to think about and pursue, if there's some way that that could be worked into the whole rating in order to get state money. This committee will be meeting monthly, and the next meeting, we're going to be particularly looking to see if there are things that we need to put in the legislative package for the region having to do with flooding, and I'm thinking that this item that we have on our agenda might better be a regional issue, or at least for everybody to look at. I'm not sure what that proposal does, but it's just my reading said that, you know, there would be a state authority appointed, and they would determine priorities. And what makes me real nervous is, you know, up until this point, the local government has done all the heavy lifting on flooding, and I hate to see us get to this point now that we're ready to move and we get stymied until the state catches up with us. I certainly think we need to have some state funding, but I don't want them to, you know, I don't want them to have to have a time that we can't do anything, or we can't do the priorities. I want it to be local. So that's just a thought of mine, and we might want to think about that piece of legislation to go to the PDC as whether or not it's something good for the region. So I think from that committee, another committee that I'm a liaison to is the Green Ribbon Committee, and we had an especially interesting session last Wednesday, or Thursday, I guess it was. We had a report from Wetlands Watch, but they had been working with a Virginia Tech group of students, and they were there at the meeting. They had been here in Virginia Beach for about three days last week to work on their program, their studio, as they called it, with these senior potentially landscape engineers looking at how to do their work in relation to flooding and sea level rise, and they were using, they're using Virginia Beach as their prototype, and to see some of their suggestions was really interesting, and I just thought that was kind of neat for the Green Ribbon Committee. And then a third item that I have, a couple of, well, three, four weeks ago, I passed around to you all this paper about the follow-up of conserving forest land to ensure lasting benefits of flood risk reduction services, which was a follow-up to the presentation that we had had during our summer series. And I have been meeting with a, working with a steering committee to kind of work on what we might do in follow-up to that, how we can make certain that some of these, we have a really great forest system, but that we can bring more of them into a protected position, a protected status, so that we don't lose them. I think we really should be looking at our forests more as a part of our stormwater system, and I noticed the brochure that our arborist has put out this year for our urban forest does a real good job of calculating trees as a part of our stormwater system, and puts a value of $84.6 million in benefits per year from our forests for stormwater runoff reduction. I think we need to evaluate our forests a little bit more, and maybe we can do more to protect the forests that we have, particularly in flood-prone areas. And I would like to have just a few minutes during our workshop next Tuesday to kind of bring you up to speed on some of the ideas that we've come up for that. I hope we've got something good to propose. And then I will just also mention that in light of the recent flooding we had from the wind tides down in the southern part of the city, I asked Tom Leahy and Public Works if they would do a session down county to talk with folks, and so this Thursday night from 6:00 until 8:00 at the Senior Resource Center, we're going to be having a session. They're going to be explaining what the city's study work is all about, what we're looking at in these two studies, giving them a little bit more background into what we're doing, and I really hope that we can show folks the kind of data that's being generated with the gauges that we're having and all the work we're doing, because I think it's important that the people understand the depth of the work that we're doing, so that they'll be much more ready to understand these recommendations when they come out. They're also going to have a portion to talk about what we look at in an emergency such as this, and what has been reviewed, and Tom can certainly jump in on this, and then have also an opportunity for people to share their experiences and observations. So this will be this Thursday evening, and I really hope we'll get some good turnout from the folks down there, because, you know, we've had three of these very unusual wind tides over the last two years. We've always had them, but they've been coming more like every five or six years, not three and two years, and it's something that's rather concerning, and we need to talk with folks about it. Okay?
Mr. Wood?
Mine's on the nature of a council comment. If there's any more liaison.
Any more liaison reports? All right, we'll go to council comment.
So a couple of months ago, the mayor and I went to do the city employee of the year thing down at the aquarium, and when we were there, we sat in on the tail end of an employee meeting, and one of the things they were talking about was the TripAdvisor rating that they had gotten, and they were deeply analyzing why they'd gotten a slightly negative rating from one individual, and they went through the whole process of what occurred that day, what were the comments, why were the comments there, it was very detailed. And it kind of led me to believe that they had a pretty decent handle on at least that aspect of social media. So today, at the State of the Region, the aquarium was singled out as leading by example an organization in Hampton Roads that wins on social media, and it talks about the aquarium's 117,000 Facebook followers, talking about the videos that they launch, and how they actually utilize social media to build the brand and create interest in the museum. So I thought that was, that was kind of interesting. I'm sure at some point we'll get a copy of this document, but just this one page actually does highlight something that the aquarium's done quite well.
All right, any other comments?
I want to follow up on a point. I maybe before had a chance to have an extended discussion with Congressman Scott Taylor on this maritime skills deficiency that we have in our region. The shipbuilders in the maritime industry talk about a lot, and I think probably, you know, certainly after the election, he's busy with things you can imagine as well. But I do believe that we need to get those players or their staffs and figure out what the industry, and I know there's players that want to do that, and I can pass this on to the city manager, but this is an opportunity that we should solidify before the Hill hearings start next March on the FY '20 Department of Defense budget, if we're trying to get some help there. And more importantly, I've talked with several people in the maritime industry themselves that are very much interested in that as well. They're the biggest benefactors in many ways, compete for work, but I just hope that that's getting on the regional agenda and on their work plan, the fashion and put together, the ability to put that together. I think that's really important. It's a long term, and we'll always need those workers, so it's not a one-time deficiency. It's a long-term sustainment issue.
Mayor, can I respond before John jumped on his?
Please.
For the council, we just attended formerly known as Opportunity, Inc., now known as the Hampton Roads Workforce Development. They've re-titled themselves. We had their annual awards ceremony at Town Center in the ballroom at the West End. Fantastically attended from the business community and jurisdictions throughout Hampton Roads. The final award was given to Navy retired Captain Bill Crowe, who is the Ship Builders' Association CEO. Bill and I go way back to when our daughters played AAU basketball together, and we've known each other a long time. And if it would be acceptable to you, Mr. Moss, I would like to invite him to come and maybe discuss with us and give a presentation and talk about the state of the industry. He was given that award because of exactly what you're recommending we do, and maybe it would help us all to know how much effort's going on and how much support we can give to that. Would that be?
That would be super right, thank you. Because there's lots of stuff I can't discuss, but the general public knowledge stuff I can, and that would be great.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
John? Two things quickly, Mr. Mayor. I met with the city manager last week to talk about the Bird scooters down at the Oceanfront, which have really become prolific and a big problem in terms of blocking the bike paths and also becoming an attractive nuisance for people to use motorized vehicles on the boardwalk, which is not allowed. So we're kind of setting these kids up to use these things and then have the police have to ticket them, which we haven't done yet, but is going to be a consequence. So can you give us, I hate to put you on the spot, an update on where we are with?
We're going to, we're going to give you a closed session briefing on that issue whenever you finish here. About five minutes?
Then I will, I will couch my comments.
Ask and ye shall receive.
How about that? I was already aware. The second one, Mr. Mayor, if I could, is, as you all know, we hosted Warrior Week for last Patriotic Festival, and we hosted over 700 wounded warriors this year and their families. It has continued to grow at about 100 a year, and I think it's really a testament of the fact that we have done it every single year. I know from my own personal experience that it's really a function of making these men and women who are newly injured comfortable, that they're going to go to a place, that they're going to be taken care of and made to feel comfortable, and I think that we have, we have done that, and we've certainly shown that with the amount that they, that it has grown over the years. So I had a luncheon to thank the council and the city for their support, so I have an annual poster that I'll present to you, Mr. Mayor, and then I'm sure you're going to give it to Mr. Hanson to find a place to.
That's great.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Want to see it?
It's on you now. It's been in my office for three weeks.
Amanda's going to take care of it.
Amanda's.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. I believe Mr. Wood has another comment.
Yeah, I've got, I've got an add-on request for here. Everybody should have it in their place. It's a request to authorize a grant, $5,000 of Philfest USA for the fourth annual Philfest USA. This will be an add-on for this week if we could. The Philfest is this weekend. They put in a request under the non-departmental micro grants. It's the first request of the fiscal year. There is over $34,000 in that particular account, so $34,359, John, if you want it, and I don't know the change. So what I'd like to request is if we could put this on the agenda and then mark how we need to do it to put on consent if it's the will of the council.
Did we get an email today that the ambassador is going to be coming to begin this festival?
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah.
Good timing.
Very good, then.
All right, one other thing. Yes, go ahead.
I just have one quick thing. I just, for J2 on the public library board, I just, if anybody had any questions, but I did just want to give Eva the opportunity to answer them if anyone had questions, but I felt like the ordinance was pretty cut and dry, but she is here if anybody had concerns about it. That was it.
All right, one last item on comments. John Earn and I had the pleasure of attending three different affairs for the Neptune Festival this year, and I would, I think it's fair to say that the Neptune Festival was a resounding success this year at the Oceanfront. There was a big crowd for the parade, and the hotels were full. I walked along the boardwalk going over to the sculpture, sand sculpture thing, and looking in the windows of the restaurants and so forth, and the restaurants were packed. So it was a, it was a great weekend down there, and a good way to start the fall season for the Oceanfront.
First beautiful weekend we've had all summer.
And the weather, the weather was fantastic. It really was. All right. We will now go to the consent agenda, Mr. Wood.
Okay, the only item that we have speakers on is actually under the charter amendments under the public hearing. I believe it was the intent of council to defer the legislative agenda to the next voting meeting. Is that correct?
That's right.
By what date is that, Amanda?
14/16.
Defer to 10/16? Okay. Just for, we're going to have a public hearing on this. Is everybody okay with keeping this on consent for deferral? Does that, does that work, Mark?
Well, do we have registered speakers?
We do.
Not for the legislative agenda, just on the public hearing.
Okay, very good. There's no registered speakers.
Does that work?
I'm happy with that.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So other than that, is there anything else on here that anybody wants to pull? And then I would ask also to add resolution number eight, number eight, resolution authorized $5,000 grant.
All right, let me make sure I understand that we're deferring.
J1.
J1.
To 10/16.
To 10/16, and that's it, right?
Yeah, is there any other comments on any of these other items? Okay.
And we'll do the add-on when we go out.
So then we do, we'll do the add-on, we'll do a motion to add item eight, and then we'll put that on consent, if that's okay? All right.
All right.
Don't anybody leave while the motion to add is being considered, because it takes seven affirmative votes for the add, and there's only eight of you, so.
Only one person can move and leave.
All right. We'll officially call the informal session, and I will read the motion for the closed session. Chair will entertain a motion to recess into closed session pursuant to the exemption from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 Beach District. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 Motorized Scooters. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Counsel appointments, counsel boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. May I have a motion?
So move second.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Sinley?
Hi.
Ms. Dyer?
Hi.
Ms. Davenport?
Hi.
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 Hi.